Gentlemen, it's five o'clock. About my time. Time to begin our afternoon meeting. Time to call ourselves in order and turn it over to.
Mr. Russ.
Right ahead. You're all.
Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity today to give you an update on our wastewater treatment plant, capital improvement plan. Start with a little bit of background. Our current wastewater treatment plant has a capacity of 10.4 million gallons per day. And that's broken out, the city share is 7.75 million per day and Union County 2.65. That makes up the 10.4. Right now, our current flows, based on our customer base, our annual average is about 65% of capacity, so we still have capacity for economic growth. Back in 2008, several of you were on the council at that time, but we first presented this capital plan to the Environment Water Resource Committee Council, then we had the joint meeting with the county commissioners at that time. And the plan provided a roadmap for the future improvements and expansions to do the wastewater plant to meet the needs of the city and also the east side of the Union County system. Of course, we had the recession, the recession, the great recession, and the slow economy has delayed some of those needs. But in fiscal '16, we thought it was good timing to update the plan, and so that's what we're going to be presenting today. Really, the plan provides an assessment of how to meet our future needs, how to meet the needs for the city and the Union County east side wastewater needs. There's really three factors that go into that needs assessment. First is facility age. The majority of our plant was, the structures were built either in 1965 or '76. And even though those facilities have been well maintained, they do have a finite useful life. The concrete and steel do the corrosive atmosphere, the wastewater environment, those facilities have a limited life. Don't expect you to read this, but just, the colors tell the story here. The blue being built in 1965, the yellow in 1976, and then we had some '80s and '90s small facilities. But the heart of the plant, the blue and yellow, were built in that '65 to '76 vintage, so the facilities are getting some age on them. That's a factor. The second need, of course, is for economic development. We want to always be able to meet the future needs for industrial, commercial, and residential growth that's directed by the city council. So the, if you, the plan is in your packet that was distributed to you, but we analyzed three scenarios for what we'd call a slow, moderate, or maybe a higher growth rate. Those coincided with a 1, 1.5, or 2% annual flow growth. So using the middle projection, the moderate growth, which kind of stacks up with what we've seen over the past 10 years or so, averaged about 1.5% annual growth, the next need to expand the plant would occur in 2031. We're still about 15 years away from that, from that time. The third item that is going to create the need to make improvements to the plant is environmental regulations. And this is actually the big one, I say big for last. In 2014, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, that's the new dean there, they adopted a plan called the Nutrient Criteria Plan. And there's significant pressure from US EPA at the federal level nationwide to remove nutrients from the receiving waters that accept the treated wastewater that comes from plants across the country. So in our NPDS permit, we are anticipating, we could have limits for nitrogen phosphorus, those are the two nutrients that they're focusing on. We could have limits in our NPDS permit possibly as early as 2028. So jump back a couple slides, the hydraulic need to expand the plant 2031, the regulatory need to expand the plant 2028. That's a good thing when those two things line up, because if we have to make these significant improvements to the plant, we want to do both those at the same time. That's when it's going to be most cost effective. And really, bottom line, that last bullet, our current plant, the technology, the treatment technology that we employ cannot meet those limits for nitrogen phosphorus. We don't have technology that reduces those nutrients. So that's going to drive the need for our plant, plant upgrades. So when we considered all those items and we're doing the planning for what is the recommendation for this plant for the future, first, we considered the age, we also considered the difficulty in retrofitting this old treatment plant with processes and structures that would include the nutrient removal technology. We also considered how difficult it is to keep that plant running while you're trying to make these major upgrades. And then, of course, we're always most interested in the lowest cost, the lowest lifecycle cost of future improvements. So all things considered, the recommendation you'll find in the study to meet our long-term needs is to actually construct a new wastewater treatment plant adjacent to the existing plant in approximately the timeframe of 2030, so it's still about 15 years out. Of course, that timing's going to be flexible depending on the economy. How fast do we grow? How many more industries do we attract? Our residential growth? But it could also, it also needs to be flexible based on those regulatory changes. We've seen the state in the past take a little longer than they anticipate to promulgate those regulations, so we're going to have to stay flexible in terms of that timeframe when this large new plant would have to be constructed. But in the study, you'll find the best recommendation, and we worked with a consulting firm, Hazen Sauer, that's done a great job for us, the initial phase of that new plant would be a 15 million gallon per day plant. Keep in mind, we're at 10.4 now, so that plant would provide both hydraulic capacity and also nutrient removal capability. That would be potentially broken out with a continued partnership with the county. 10 million gallons for the city, 5 million gallons per day for Union County.
How close have we been able to pay for that? I know we put one about here.
I've got the cost slides coming up, yeah. Yeah, that's the favorite sticker shot for last, but we are going to talk about the costs. So that initial 15 million gallon per day phase, when you build a plant, you don't want to have to jump in five years later and do another expansion. So the initial phase is projected to last till 2050, meeting the city needs. So it'd be a 20-year time horizon for the needs of the city. And then, they master planned the site layout to be expandable up to 22.5 million gallons per day. And one thing you'll see in the study, if you glance through it, we are interested in possible, I should have clarified, the 15 million gallon per day initial plant would fit on currently owned city property. We don't have to acquire any property to build that phase, which is attractive. However, last bullet, the purchase of some additional adjoining property, you'll see in the study, we examined that, there may be an opportunity to actually save some money by purchasing additional property, and I'll show you why that's the case here in just a second. Again, don't expect you to read this, but just look at the color codes. The green facilities are the first phase. Here's the existing plant, here. We own up to this creek line to the east.
Jake, just.
Okay. Existing plant here. Some of you who have been on council for a while remember, we purchased the 23 acres adjacent to the plant just for a future contingency. So that would be utilized in the first phase, the green. This is the existing plant. You might notice how large these basin structures are compared to our little basins today. I mean, we have a well-run 10.4 million gallon per day plant, but look how large these basins are. That's for the nutrient removal criteria. It takes a different basin size, the tanks have to be larger to get that treatment. So again, the green facilities are Phase One, which is the 15 million gallon per day plant. What you see is they take up existing components of the existing plant, like our equalization basin gets taken up, that's why it has to be rebuilt over here. So again, in looking at adjacent properties, we do have some options if we do acquire those properties to possibly save some money by not having to absorb other facilities that could be reused instead of rebuilt. So that's a positive thing. Another interesting thing you might see is that the second phase, which would be going from 15 to 18.75 million, there's very small additions to get that next capacity increment. You have to build the heart of the plant to get to 15, but then there's just very small increments to go for the next phase, and then the last phase is the orange facility. So it's laid out in three phases.
Probably on another slide too, but building this is you, does the other plant continue to operate during this construction and after construction? Is it salvageable or reusable, or is it going to be a backup? Is it going to be?
Great question. I'll address that here. It definitely has to continue to operate. Wastewater's coming in the door every second of the day, so it has to continue to operate during this construction. That's why the green facilities are the furthest away from the existing. There's only a few perimeter facilities that will actually be, stay in service after the new plant comes online. This is pretty much going to be decommissioned, because it doesn't have the technology to do that phosphorus-nitrogen removal. It kind of loses its value if those limits aren't imposed. That's a great question. Any other questions on this kind of slide before I move on? Okay, we have coordinated with Union County. We've had a long-term partnership with them at that facility. So we've had extensive staff communications and meetings, really through this whole process, beginning as early as 2015. And then, the Board of Commissioners adopted the county master plan update. Of course, their master plan is huge. They have multiple plants, and they're going to be a very, very large system long-term because of the growth in the county. But they did adopt a master plan update just last August, and they identified a continued partnership with Monroe as their preferred option for the east side. They did actually direct their staff to continue to look downstream on Richson Creek. That'd be closer to the Rocky River for options, should that meet their needs at a higher level. But right now, their preferred option is working with us. And if Union County chose to pursue a different treatment option, maybe downstream on Richson Creek, that doesn't mean we can't proceed with the 10 million gallon component that identified on our own. We would just downsize those basins. Instead of a 15, it would be an initial 10 MGD million gallon per day plant. So it's not a big concern at this time if Union County did, chose not to partner with us, but right now, they've identified that they would like to. Okay, here's the cost. I didn't bring the whole table in, it's just so hard to read on the screen that's in your packet. It's detailed out in Table 4.2, but building a new wastewater treatment plant is extremely expensive. The initial, the summary is, the initial 15 million gallon per day phase would be about $143 million. That would be broken out. The city's component would be 95.7 million, Union County 47.8. Those are serious dollars. You know, really, it would be the single biggest capital improvement project, public works type project in the city's history that the city's funded. So it does require some significant advanced rate planning analysis. I'll talk about that here in just a little bit. Just to make sure, we have adequate funding to build these facilities. I mean, the city's going to be in the wastewater business forevermore, as long as it's a city. So we do have to take that serious. We've got 15 years to plan ahead. We want to not only ensure there's adequate funding, but also avoid any large rate spikes. And try to practice what council has done over the past few years, which is more of a uniform annualized strategy to raising rates to fund a project of this magnitude. On top of that, of course, our existing plant has to be effectively operated and maintained. We've got a great staff, they're doing a good job, but you'll see in the study, and we've already seen some of the projects come before council, the capital maintenance on just our existing plant is approximately 8 million over the next four fiscal years. And that's just equipment that's 20, 25 years old, it's worn out. We have to make that investment to last that next 15 years and still run that, we have to run the plant full compliance with law. So what we're proposing, these are the action items, and this was presented to the Public Enterprise Committee last month at their meeting. And today, of course, is the city council presentation. What we'd like to do is bring back a cost and rate analysis to show you what it really means to try to fund that magnitude of a project at your February strategic meeting. And as part of the action items going forward, we want to examine capital reserve account strategies that would ensure that adequate funding base, plus avoid rate spikes. We can, we plan to continue to monitor the properties around the plant, looking for those cost savings if it makes sense to acquire some additional property. And then closely monitor the nutrient criteria plan status. If there are delays in that regulation and our flow growth stays at the 1.5 or a little bit smaller, we may be able to defer these improvements even further, and that is always a good thing from a cost perspective. So with that, I'd like to take any additional questions.
Do we own that property on the right side of the road as you go into the wastewater plant?
No, it's right by Decorative Specialties. If you go in Decorative Specialties and go to the end, it's that hillside that drops off down to the river basin. We bought 23 acres, I can't even remember the year we did it, it's probably 10 years ago.
I don't know if we own any of that on the right going in.
Not yet. It.
Well, it's from the fence back is what we actually own, right?
There's a small creek, this is, that little church sits right here, Mayor. I think it's that one maybe? Oh, no, this side of the road. So you're saying on the right side of the road. Got a few houses. This is a little branch, a little creek, and we own to the creek that is.
Are there not any houses on the right side of the road, not picking up going into the wastewater plant?
Oh, okay. We.
You've got one brick house on the left.
Yeah, we own, so walk-up would be off the screen. Walk-up would be off the screen, so this is the entrance road, so we only own up to the back property of these residences that are on walk-up. We don't own, as you immediately come to the plant, we don't own that piece right on the right, if you have to go a couple hundred feet before our property. Next stop.
You talked about the county, partnering with the county, and then you said that they had their staff looking at Rocky River. If they were to do that, what would we do as far as their funds? I mean, does that affect the funding at all that we get from the county?
Well, there'd be a transition as they phase out the old plant. Hopefully, that would occur at the same time we needed to build this, and so we would phase out that contract, and then we would, we would have to fund the new plant. The other thing we are interested in, if they can build a plant downstream that's more cost effective than this site, I don't think they can, we would look at a partnership of potentially moving our plant a little bit downstream. We'd have to extend our piping to take the wastewater there, but we certainly want to continue to look at all options, low-cost options.
Have they said anything about doing that? Have we had any conversations? I know you were talking about in '08 or '09, whenever it was, and the council met with the commissioners, and they talked about it before this happened, and I don't think this happened since then. That may be something to do, to get together and to discuss those type of things.
So I've been through four public works directors, and I know at least Kristy Putnam and, well, the current director have, they have studies on the shelf right now looking at sites downstream, so this is not a new concept for them. They've been looking at six, eight, 10 sites for future plants, really for the last 10 or 15 years. So it's not a new thing, and I think the commissioners recognize that, and they just told me to continue to look at that as if it was cost effective.
As far as us acquiring the property there or needing to, who actually, I was going to say to the right there, maybe across that creek?
Yeah, there's a, I think it's a 65 acre piece right now, and I did look up the owner, but I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. This is kind of a Union County name, I can't remember, it was Helms or Occam or something, but it was, it's a nice piece of property. There hasn't been a lot of interest in, of course, residential growth there, so it might be something we could acquire if, you know, if it came on the market. Plus, it's right next to a wastewater treatment plant, so I mean, the whole marketability of it might be a little bit less for residential, that type thing, which would help us if we go to ours. Would you like me to send you the owner, just as a piece of information?
Well, I was just curious about something. I mean, I know we're looking at, you know, 10, 20 years down the road, but.
Well, if it came on the market now, we would have to act on it.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why we're watching that. Kyle Ketchum's our wastewater superintendent, he drives in the gate every day. If he sees a for sale sign out there, he's going to pick up the phone and call me, so we'll keep an eye on it.
And then sometimes if we express interest, I know that has the tendency to increase the cost, but.
I understand.
Could there just, you know, really engagement fiscal way, so if they want to sell, we may have interest in some type of agreement.
Like their first option or something?
Right. All I'm saying is, I wouldn't wait until 2030 to make that right.
You know, Russ, nobody else really right now have or should have any interest in that but us. I can't imagine, but down the road, it could, it might be worth exploring. I mean, that's a key part of expansion in that area right there.
And certainly, we can do it without, and that's what I want to make clear. We've got the property to do it. It would be the difference if we moved the plant further to the east, this equalization basin would be preserved, and this would not be needed. That's the saving, so that's traded off against the cost of the land. So if you'd like, we'd be glad to explore that and work through the attorney's office and see, make contacts.
Right. That's all.
We'll do that.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm just glad that we're thinking that far out, and this is not something that we have to conquer today and or be concerned about. And I appreciate the foresight.
Yeah, we've got to look long-term, that's good. Thank you, Russ. Very good presentation, sir.
Okay. I've got item two. Give me a second, I'll get it up here, and then you can announce it. Item two, appreciate the opportunity to give you some information, it's for information only, about our Catawba River Water Treatment Plant Supply and some potential non-capacity costs that have come up. Again, a little background, back in 2005, we entered into an agreement with Union County. It's a combined water wastewater agreement, water sewer agreement. Monroe's interest, of course, was water capacity at that time, and we were able to secure, we bought into their Catawba River Water Treatment Plant and bought into a allocated capacity of just over 5%. That gave us 1.99 million gallons per day of assured supply. The cost of that was 1.74 million back in 2005. There was a water distribution element to the contract, in other words, the piping needed to get that water from the Catawba River up to Union County. And our share was 11%, 2.6 million dollars. So the total cost of securing that 1.99 million gallons per day was 4.34 million. And I want to put that in perspective, because today's cost, if we were to build a pipeline to the Atkin River or the Catawba to get that kind of supply, just to get that 1.99 million, that'd be over 29 million. So we've got a very good value out of that contract and that negotiation, and really, that's critical to our future economic development. That doesn't mean we're not continuing to look at other supplies, but right now, our combined lakes and the 1.99 really put us in a good position for economic development because we have surplus capacity. So as part of that agreement, a couple interesting points. It is an agreement in perpetuity, so it has no, because of the large costs involved, there's no expiration date. As long as we continue to meet our financial obligations under the contract, we enjoy that 1.99 in perpetuity, so it's really ours to use forever. But as far as that, it also obligates the city to what we call, or what is termed in the contract, non-capacity costs, for any regulatory or reliability or maintenance needs that will maintain that plant, we have to pay the 5.53%. So we are obligated by contract. Right now, the Catawba River Plant is undergoing some significant improvements totaling over 65 million dollars. And the primary driver was the, something called the Catawba River Low Influent Protocol Agreement with Duke Energy, that's a mouthful. What it basically is, is during drought, if Duke stops releasing water, the plants have no supply coming in, so they have to do all kinds of things under that low-flow protocol. And so that drove the need for some significant improvements, which I'll show you here in just a second. And that 65 million dollar package of improvements provides no initial expanded capacity beyond the 36 million gallon per day plant that's been there for the last seven years. So there is no capacity element to these 65 million dollars worth improvement initially. I know you can't read that, but it is in your packet. Wanted to just summarize, of the 65 million, there is a 35 million dollars for a 1 billion gallon reservoir. So they're building this very large reservoir to store water so that during that low-flow protocol, they can continue to supply us and Union County their needs. That also required putting another intake out into the river, very expensive, and also a very large pump station improvement so that reservoir can be filled quickly during times of plenty, and then the plant will draw on that 1 billion gallon per day reservoir if the water's curtailed from the Duke releases. There's tons of engineering costs, they also had to mitigate, and anytime you flood an area with a reservoir, you have to do fire metal mitigation, so all that was very expensive. So our potential non-capacity costs, based on our contractual share, it is 3.63 million. And that was broken out in that table, and that is also in your packet this evening. We did have some concerns, and got in touch with the city manager and shared them with him, and they basically revolved around the use of these installed facilities, the 65 million dollars worth of facilities. If those facilities were used by a future expansion that maybe didn't pay a pro-rata share, that would be a concern to us, because we're paying for those today. And those concerns really were based on the engineering report that the, that Union County gave us that told why those improvements were needed. So we met with the county, Larry and I met with the county staff, and we went over those concerns. We also have asked the city attorney to review our contract and those concerns. And the county has pledged to give us the additional information that they hadn't provided yet, which was the environmental assessment documents that would show that all of those 65 million dollars worth improvements are strictly needed to support the current plant. So that information is forthcoming, and as soon as it is, we'll evaluate it. But we wanted to alert you that, you know, there is a potential cost to us of 1.63 million so that we continue to have that very reliable supply. And should that play out, and we feel it's justified, and we're going through the attorney and the city manager, we will be bringing you whatever needed budget action to fund that. It'll either be combined with a fiscal '18 budget or before, depending on the time. So glad to field any questions about that.
Question? Thank you, sir. Number four.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa's going to pull up the budget calendar, and while she's doing that, we'd like to share the budget calendar with you all to alert you with the flow of how we see the budget process going. The budget calendar is really kind of twofold. There's staff element and then the workshops that city council's involved with. Briefly, a summary of the staff activities leading up to the proposed first budget workshop for city council, which we proposed in April. The front end of the process, the staff process, there's a lot of data collection and analysis that has these deadlines. In November, staff updates the five-year capital improvement plan. In January, personal requirements are due. In February, at, for the General Services Committee, outside agency requests will be provided or received and provided in the General Services. or received and provided in the General Services Committee. And then on the staff level, operational increases or those requests are received and are due. In March, fee schedule revisions are received, and that gets us to April. So between now and April, we'd expect, or I'd ask you all to expect, progress updates on some of our major projects such as the Science Center Theater and the Public Facility Study. Should, Public Facility Study probably be late, later, close to April, maybe before, but that's got a chunk of time associated with it. So it's your first workshop in April that you're proposing, you'd hear a revenue forecast, which, provided at that time, you've got the benefit of three quarters of data to use to provide a forecast going into the next fiscal year, so it's probably about the most reliable that we'll have before the beginning of fiscal year, or actual, actual received data. So with that, I guess she's getting pulled up, are there other events or dates or presentations that the council would like us to program? If not, that's basically a summary of the budget schedule involving the council's side of the process.
We had contemplated, I had received some feedback from the council that perhaps there was an interest early on for department overviews of major projects in January or so. Lisa and I have talked maybe at a rather high level, maybe April, a lot of departments are doing something by department, whether involved in individual departments or are very high level, and present advice yourself for this.
If there are any questions, I'll solve it.
Any questions on that? If none, all right, thank you, Larry. Anything else? You hear nothing, do I hear a motion to adjourn? A motion to a second?
Second.
Okay, adjourn, we'll give you six o'clock, county...